This afternoon, we're a few minutes behind schedule already. The first item this afternoon is our 2023 valid question discussion. First item on there, of course, is the increase in lodging tax to fund outdoor maintenance.
Yeah.
How much do you want to send us to what your thoughts are?
Mayor, absolutely. I'll just kind of give a little bit, first of all, the history of our lodging tax. It was adopted through an initiative that was circulated by petition of voters in 2021 at a rate of 3%. It hasn't changed since then. Lodging tax in our ordinance as prescribed now is specifically dedicated for the sole purpose of marketing and advertising the city. And so we're generating close to about half a million dollars a year, I think, in lodging tax that is earmarked to go for marketing and advertising to boost tourism in our community. So a significant amount of money. And I think, as you all know, we have a tourism board who, under the ordinance, the word is administers that fund. And so we may want to look at the ordinance as a whole at this point as well. There might be some changes and tweaks we want to make on that side. But in doing some research and looking at how other communities are using their lodging tax, some of them dedicate it certainly for marketing and advertising, but they dedicate it for other purposes as well. So I'll give you an example. Durango has their lodging tax split into different tiers by percentage. One of the things they use to fund it is for their city transportation system, because that's good, obviously, for tourists when they come to town to have a way to get around. I'd like to see us look at adding some specific dedications in our ordinance, but we also have an opportunity right now. We're at 3%. So by comparison, our surrounding communities are anywhere between 5 and 5.7%. So we're a little on the low side compared to our neighbors. So Canyon City is a good example, they're at 5.25. I think, don't quote me on these numbers, but Lamar is at, I think, 5.25, Pueblo's at 5.25. And then just to give you examples of, sky's the limit on this, Denver's at like nearly 14%.
Wow.
Yeah. So just want to kind of explain how lodging tax works. I think we all have a general idea, but anybody who lodges in our community, and that should be applicable to short-term rentalists as well. So Airbnb is, they do charge lodging tax and we get that revenue. Hotels, on a bill, there should be a line item for that lodging tax that's passed on to the consumer. So right now, let's say you have a hundred dollar hotel bill, there'll be a $3 charge on there that the city gets right now just for marketing and advertising. So we would be proposing increasing that to somewhere around 5% or above to generate some additional revenue. So there would be an impact on our lodging community. I don't know that we would see any people who might come in and say, "Well, I'm not going to stay in Trinidad because I have to pay $2.70 more in lodging taxes." But the brilliant thing about lodging tax is none of our local residents pay for that. So it's all visitors to our community, so there's no impact on the tax rate to our residents, which is good, because we do understand that we're not the most affluent community and times are hard for people. So we would never propose raising taxes at this point to our residents. But what I would like to see is, and that's why I'm bringing this forward to you all today, is to maybe do a 2.25, which would take us up to 5.25 or 2.75% proposal to the voters and dedicate that money for outdoor maintenance of our parks and rec facilities. Maybe even get Jared some staff. We'll talk a little bit more about reorganizing the city's structure at a future work session. But I really think that if we could dedicate some funds specifically towards maintaining what we have and what we build, it would be something that would be a gift that would keep on giving for our community for a long time. One of the things that comes to mind that I've observed over the six months I've been here is we talked a lot about new trail development. We talked a lot about new parks and rec amenities, and they're all really good ideas. Even, you know, thoughts of expanding the Riverwalk, that's all brilliant and we need to get there, but it needs to come with a budget to maintain it as well. So right now, Bob's crews are doing a very good job of maintaining our parks, but they also do streets and bridges, they also do general building maintenance. So they're stretched pretty thin. And I think the more we can get as a dedicated resource to focus specifically on our parks, trails, outdoor spaces, the better. So that's what I'm bringing forward to you today and would love to hear your discussions. We can certainly talk about the structure of the ordinance as well. Otherwise, 3% we're already getting, which again goes to marketing and advertising the community.
You know, interestingly, you mentioned, we've already discussed this, but a couple of weeks ago when I was in Denver at the 22 meeting, I looked at my bill afterwards and what the lodging tax was. It was like $18 a day.
Yeah.
On the 120 dollar.
That's on the dollar, right?
So $18 a day. On top of that was there's a tax structure, so that's pretty high. So that additional 2.5, 2.2, or 6% is not very much. I think it would just be a good boost for other areas that we could use the money for. And I guess that would be the big thing is the distribution to put it in the right place. How we could use it.
Yeah.
I think, sorry Steve, one of the big things, you know, we bring on X11, we signed an IGA. We're responsible for plowing that. Boulevard addition came on, now we got to maintain Boulevard, but we didn't get any additional staff. We keep adding parks and amenities, but we don't have the staff. It's just, we're getting stretched thinner and thinner, guys.
I guess maybe one of the things would be good is like from your end, is for you to kind of put together a budget for what you would need for additional personnel or whatever, so that we would know if we were to, whatever percentage of we have to go to, and how much it would help you, how much you would need to take care of the issue that you have, the issues that you have in any place else that you would want to put that in toward.
And Mayor, I would also say, you know, staff is one side, but the money can be used for other things too. We could maybe build some reserves and do some capital improvements. So one of the things that comes to mind is the Boulevard area of Colorado. You know, that might be an area that you could use some of this funding to beautify and redo. There's that little triangle park that's there at Willow and Pine. That gets neglected because we just don't have the staff to do that. Speaking of X11 as well, there's also plantings that we're maintaining and lighting that we're maintaining. So there's a lot of things that come our way. But yeah, I mean, open to whatever thoughts you all have. This is just one idea, it can certainly be used for whatever you all think would be a good fit.
And Mayor, to just use, just like coming up with a dollar figure and then trying to use that to decide on a percentage. Wouldn't it make more sense to try to decide on a percentage and then decide how to allocate that? What it's going to be, I mean, it's.
Either way, what do you think of it best, I guess? Just hold that out as a thought.
Right. Yeah, it just seems like it would be nice to set a percentage as high as you reasonably think. I mean, not try to gouge people staying in hotels and short-term rules, but try to decide on a percentage and then just deal in. You know, you would decide obviously before it would go, you know, to.
Well, I guess maybe I didn't clarify because I would say like, well, let's say you would need another staff person, what it would cost.
Right.
So let's say you were able to get an additional $300,000 a year in revenue. Well, do you need $100,000 in that or $50,000? That's usually. Not so much as to the overall rate when you're charged. If you're able to come up with additional $30,000 a year.
I think we could probably come up with like a justification for millions. $200,000 a year, yeah.
The history of the lodging tax, I think it ran the third time this in the past. So I think 3% minus that, that's like.
2001.
And at that time, the state had identified that lodgers' taxes were to be used specifically for advertising and marketing. And since then, governor policies changed that to include other uses of lodger taxes.
Well, my point is it makes sense to increase it because things have changed since 2002 for sure. So I'm totally in favor of that.
The biggest issue there is like when we first put that tax in and out, you had to sell it to the people because people in Trinidad think it's a tax on them. So you have to make it very clear that it is not a tax that you're paying. You're voting for a tax and someone else is paying for a lodging. So whatever you decide, you need to really, that was a big issue when I was on the council. We had to really sell that.
And we would put as much information out as possible. We can't advocate for the question either way, but we can explain this would generate this amount of money, these are the intended uses for it, and make sure, to your point, that, you know, we're making a very clear this is not a tax on our residents.
Is there any conversation within your staff to separate street and bridge and parks and rec?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, at a future work session, hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll be bringing an item before you to look at reorganizing the city's staff structure. And that's one of the things we're currently looking into. So it's a different conversation, but just to give you a frame of reference, our municipal code actually specifies the departments that we're supposed to have as the city. And unfortunately, as changes have been made over the years, the code hasn't been amended to reflect that. So our code actually has a parks and rec department in our ordinance. So we need to clean that up and decide how we're going to work. And that's definitely something Councilor Gray were looking into.
That's a great idea. From the very get-go, six years ago when I got on council, I thought that department was stretched pretty thin between this year.
And there's some ambiguity too as to who's responsible for what.
Exactly.
And so we want to make sure we're cleaning that up.
I think it'd be a more effective, efficient way of.
You know, another thing I was just thinking about is that you mentioned that some of these other municipalities and places, they're like 5.2 is the max, it sounds like.
I've seen 5.75, so.
I wonder how long they had that and how are they looking at that now? Because the way it costs is if everything is going up, are they looking at increasing that boost fees? It would be interesting to compare the way we can call them and maybe just find out and see if they're comfortable with what their wishes are now.
Although we would be careful not to have too significant of a jump in this one increase. Sorry, if someone were looking to go with a seven, we wouldn't want to go, I don't think, from three to seven.
Right.
I don't need to be the foil, definitely, saying.
I think we'd go to six, but I think six are slightly below.
Is there any way we can, valid issue we could put incremental, like after, I guess that's not positive.
I don't think you can.
And besides the retirement rates.
What did you say?
I said besides the retirement rates, we don't even count. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
But it's a fee that, I don't even think the average travel really looks at.
Yeah. It's also to their benefit. So if they come to visit Trinidad and they have nicer outdoor amenities because of that, they get a benefit for paying that.
What are the numbers of like 2022?
What was the numbers of 2022?
It was in our budget.
For how much we generated?
Yeah.
I believe it's around a half million.
So you double that, if the same amount of travelers come through, you just generate double your income.
And as we talked about this too, you know, like I said, 3% is dedicated towards marketing and advertising. And that is, again, about half a million dollars a year. So now would be the chance if you wanted to reallocate some of that. When we adopted the ordinance in 2001, I'm guessing we're generating less than $100,000. And now 20 years later, you know, that's really expanded up into a half million dollars worth of money to advertise.
Oh, there are two right now that were, right now, you know, from our marijuana funds, we're taking money from marijuana funds to help pay for some of the employees. So maybe what we could do is take, if this goes through, that way, like what we're all talking about, is that they'll be able to stand alone, stand by their own, you know, their own two feet, rather than have to take it from marijuana funds. That's it.
Is smoking a pros?
Yes, it does.
If they're self-sufficient, that would be a bit.
Exactly.
Just to add to that and clarify a little bit, the budget for it, the tourism board is 600,000 thousand. But about 200,000 of that is for reserves. So the tourism board is not utilizing all of the money in any one given year. A lot of that will go into reserves. I won't brag, I haven't saved money, I've been able to put it into a reserve fund, what we have. And so we've been able to do such things like this year, we're thinking about purchasing a van so that we can use for transportation of, you know, different items like transporting individuals or lodgers from hotels to bringing downtown for events and things like that. So there is some reserve funds that have been put into this year's budget. So even though it's at 600,000 thousand this year, 200,000 of that is from reserves.
I think what it goes down to, what we've been advocating is that each department, other than what comes out of general, like department, police department, other departments have become like, you said, self-sufficient. They generate their own funding enough. And I think that's where we need to, that's where we need to go.
I was surprised to hear Steve shared this with me a while back that we were as low as we are compared to our cities. So I think if we explain it carefully to the voters and say, well, this isn't a money grab, we're just keeping pace with others that are situated, say, we think that's a good idea. So I think the trick you're employing is what you brought up first, which is that the structure of the current ordinance puts the advertising and the marketing function in the hands of a tourism board. Some of whom may or may not have expertise in marketing or advertising. And that's to be the troubling thing because I think it's why our messaging hasn't been kind of piecemeal. Again, here are several who get on tourism and say, this is the way I think we should present ourselves. The next year, this is the way we're going to present ourselves. And I think if we had a cohesive message that that was going to, it would benefit the whole city. So I think we maybe want to look at reframing how we explain what that board does or create some way that is, because at this point, it's really, I don't know, or you can speak up. It's not really answerable to the city of Trinidad with regard to how it spends the money because of the way that ordinance is framed. And I think that's not the best way that that should be done. But we have good minds now making decisions and I really want it to be more professionally cast to.
I think that is the two beside that. You have to be careful, I think we don't take away too much from the action board itself because that will feel like we've been, that downward sense of both, I guess. So you've got to be kind of distracting my attention.
I think that just the purpose of that board and the responsibilities of that board could be firmly refined. But as it stands now, we don't, as the city council, have a say in what they do, basically. And that.
I was curious, if there is a reserve, and it's good to hear there is a reserve, is purchasing a van in the purview of that board, if they're supposed to be the over marking and advertising? Is purchasing a van?
So it could be considered marketing, basically. Right. We did the same thing with the trolley.
Yeah, no, and I get that, if you ride a trolley, it's absolutely marketing.
Absolutely.
It's just, I think this is a good place for discussion, obviously, so I'm just bringing up a point. Is that actually, to the letter of the law, the purpose of it? And I do think, to Councilor Moon's open street point, I think it's a good, probably a good time to really in-depth look at that because anytime you have a stream of money, I think you can get much better use of that if you treat it as a solid stream as opposed to break it up into several avenues. It tends to have less impact, in my opinion. The other thing I was going to say, I think it's a good idea to go to the 6% potentially, double that. And then it would be really important to do our best to ensure that that money is helping us to get to that destination town, like improving the streets, improving the quality of city parks and improving the walkability of the river. I mean, then we're doing it ourselves, and when I say ourselves, I mean the city, the people living here are doing themselves a favor because we're hopefully bringing in more people, generating more revenue. But it all has to be a cohesive plan. So I think we should, at this opportunity, reevaluate how it is. And I mean, you know, hopefully no one on the board is bent out of shape. And I think, you know, they're serving there because their best interest is Trinidad. And I think if it's approached properly, they'll agree.
Could I just, I was wondering a couple of points, and maybe I'm missing, or you're missing, but the money that they get now has to be spent by them and it has to be spent on marketing and advertising.
No, I'm going to get that.
Right, and so as you're saying, the definition of marketing is kind of, you know, net difference. And a lot of that has been argued over the years. But one of the points, I think, too, this was lost on me previously, but that is the difference between marketing for Trinidad in the city of Trinidad or outside the city of Trinidad. Like, you know, if I were to point to be made that if they're already here, you don't need to market for it. And it's better, and this is an argument, I'm not saying I know, but it's better to argue outside when I think the general areas are effectively supporting what you're saying.
Pardon me?
Well, I'm trying to disagree, I'm just saying that we can't take the money that they have now, that 3%, and spend it in different ways. It has to be within that unless we're authorized to spend that money differently.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
This is the opportunity to do that.
I think the best thing from my perspective is that we take the 3% that is allocated now and we can give it to the tourism board out of that, anything over above that, then we use that or maybe the council has the authorities with that additional funding. Now that we have allocated in different areas.
And Mayor, if I made just a couple of other challenges with the current ordinance, and I just want to give a little bit more to three. So I've been looking into it very recently. There is a provision there that says it's not, none of the money can be spent on capital items. So it's very clear in the ordinance, and vans and trolleys are capital items. So I don't think it's anybody's intention to violate the ordinance. But to me, if that doesn't fall in line with what the spirit of the ordinance is. One thing that I think would be really helpful though, if whatever we do is to define what marketing and advertising means. There's no defined terms in there. And so, you know, I think there is a lot of ambiguity as to what that money is spent on. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out, it was mentioned to me that our ordinance that was adopted in 2001 was modeled after Manitowoc Springs and Scottsdale, Arizona, as the model for having the board administer that. I did check both of those entities and they've taken a different approach at this point too.
And sorry to interrupt, but how much money annually does a city like that, do we know? How much money does a city like that spend in outside marketing?
We don't know, we can definitely do some research. Because that'd be super valuable to know. You find out we're spending $2 million, well, that's untenable. But if you find out we're spending $200,000, well, then we're overspending by three. I mean, obvious just made up numbers.
I think Mr. Ruber, when you were talking about this, you felt that the original ordinance was kind of ambiguous. So is there any way for us to clean up that ordinance?
I'm glad you asked that. So it was adopted by the voters, and so that, you know, puts an extra layer on. And so we're talking now internally, can council, it's an ordinance, still, can it be amended by two readings? And can you, as a group, clean up whatever you want to? I think Oliver actually had an inquiry into CML, but I don't know if they've responded yet. So we're trying to get some clarity.
I didn't get a response from CML yet.
So we're trying to ask the question, since it was originally adopted by the voters, does it need to go back out to them for any changes? And so we're researching that now. And then once we get clarification on that, then we'll know what role you all can have in amending whatever you want or if we have to submit it as a valid question.
Well, that would be also good, the additional two, two combined.
Exactly, so we would want to do all of that at the same time.
Yeah, great, that would be nice.
Yeah.
So what would your vision be, Mr. Ruber? So we do that prior ordinance change by the two readings of your ordinance. What do you envision going forward with that money? How would it be dispersed? How would that work? Kind of give me a idea.
In terms of the 3% that we're already receiving?
As far as a tourism money for you.
Right, so that would have to be, again, right now, it says marketing and advertising in the ordinance. So if we want to do anything else with that, it'd have to be approved by amending the ordinance. I don't have a specific vision. My vision is to get a dedicated fund to maintain some of our outdoor spaces. But as far as the 3% that we're already getting and how we distribute that, that's where I'm really leaning on you all to help set some policy as to what you think that money is best spent on. And if you think marketing and advertising, like we're doing now, that 3% should be left there and we spend it on that? Absolutely. But I would like to advocate for some definitions of marketing and advertising in some cleaner, clearer language.
Here's an interesting thing, is that any, because right now it's shown as a tax, correct? 3% tax?
Lodging tax, yes.
Now, anytime you put a tax board, it's going to be taken toward the, or two, the, a valid question.
Yep.
But if you actually do it as a fee, it's different. And that's, what if we have a fee instead of a tax?
I don't think it's, there's like a lodging, I mean, I, I think it's a tax because it's a percentage of your overall purchase, right? I mean, you could say a fee of $5 per lodger, but then it has to be tied to like some kind of impact.
Some sort of service.
Exactly, that the city is providing, which is a little kind of, how do you say, staying in a hotel or motel or a, you know, show to a regular place.
Now, I guess the real idea that I have, we have to do a really, really good selling point to the citizens, say, cost you.
So what you're saying, we can't use that funding for outdoor maintenance unless we change the ordinance, right? Because it's not. So that's the first thing we have to do is find out exactly what we have to do on that.
And do we increase the tax so that part also can be used for that? Right, I mean.
Well, that's why I'm asking, is that is a part that we're asking for the lodging tax, does that have to be definite to what the other 3% is?
No, so if the council said.
So if we make the other 3%, we can do what we want with that.
Right. So you could leave the 3% you have now, exactly how it is.
Right.
And we would be asking the voters, do you want to raise it, let's say 2.25%, and dedicate that for something else?
Exactly.
Would that be easier for us to do that, than try to go to sell the voters to change the ordinance again?
We could go both forward, could we not? And I think too, I think we should have a safeguard, just like you're saying. If it doesn't pass, okay, fine, then we need to split up the money and make what tourism does very focused. I think tourism does a lot of grant funding towards organizations and that can be very messy. It, for the whole entire duration that the board has been in existence, we've had more than one time where there's been perceived conflicts of interest. And it's a lot of money right now. Half a million dollars is an awful lot of money for a board who isn't subject to recall, doesn't have somebody really standing over watching them all the time on a staff panel or what have you. Handling it's, I think it's, I think it's not the best situation. And I'll remind you, the council decided that once upon a time that the city had to have an oversight board for the space to create because creative board wasn't a city department and they didn't want any funding to be not overseen. I mean, I think you should ask yourselves how much of what you see, how much have you, could you say about what goes through that tourism board? Because the oversight needs to be a little bit, I think, heavier, but it's that kind of money, it's a lot of money.
Here's mine. While we were talking earlier today about getting a strategic play together and figuring out how a board would present Trinidad to the world, the city could do that and go through all those spaces and pay for that money and then present it. At this point, it could go to tourism and say, and now it's your time to go to the special town. And they go, we all agree with that, isn't it? We're going to do something else. We have no way. And I have the new bank, and that's bizarre to see his career.
And, you know, there was also an ordinance to be made that if that money was spent really on advertising and marketing the city of Trinidad, that would have a huge impact. And there really never has, like, almost entire. And there really never has, like, almost entirely been spent on marketing and advertising for Trinidad. It just, and it was a ton of it too long ago when, I mean, it was being diverted all over the place, and it was like, okay, that's, but, I mean, it just, it's a lot of money to be.
The right thing, as I said, to be the liaison to the tourism board, one thing I have noticed is that they do try to be conscious about marketing outside that 50 mile radius. I know that they are very conscious of making sure that that happens. So, you know, that's intended.
One more thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, also, is the Welcome Center has to be written a letter to the state to be, to refund the color of Welcome Center. They operate on a fiscal year, so it is our hope that we will receive up to $80,000 again for funding the Welcome Center. That being said, currently, that the operations of the Welcome Center are entirely dependent upon the tourism funding. So that would put, hopefully, $80,000 back into the tourism fund bucket.
So I guess, so what are we, so what are we looking at here, exactly? Audrey wanted to put both out. Do we do that separately, put one, to put both funds and then one separate funds? Because then you're gonna confuse people.
Well, I think it would have to be crafted correctly, but it would probably be crafted just very carefully.
When is the, when is the date that has to go?
We have until probably about, you can say, August 30th. I wish it were in September. And then we also want to have a marketing plan ready for how it's going to be presented to the citizens and what happens.
Now, do we want to have the style of question?
It's made some suggestions from council. If we're able to achieve this, what Steve is looking for is, what ideas do we have that we would like this money to be useful? But my particular lead was to alleviate having to take money from the marijuana fund for standalone, or whatever cost that would be. So I'm not sure whatever funds you guys might have, or else can we use that money? What would be the goal of the initiative, what are those?
I like, I like what Steve is proposing, because especially if we're going with outdoor recreation and one of our major marketing themes, then we need to, as we said before, we need to be there. When the people show up, we need to have the trails, we need to be maintained, the parks need to be maintained, so I think that would be a wise use of that money.
Anything else? I think that we should take this opportunity to just really, really look at how that money is spent and ensure that.
Accountability.
Correct. And not that I have any problem.
No, but still.
In the past, but if you can focus that advertising for intention, it'll make less of point of light, we will see a benefit. So I think that just, yeah, accountable.
Or would you like to see if we're able to achieve that additional 2.5%? Is there any particular place that you'd like to utilize that money?
I agree with what's been said already, and it needs to support the betterment of people's experience that comes here, trails, roads, clean parks. Then it's all acting cohesively together. I know it's short of notice, but I think if we could somehow wave an edge very wide and have that strategic plan done, I think that's gonna help point us in the right direction, too. That's my.
Now, you're talking about the city budget and trying to improve ours within the city. You know, we have restrictions on the budget as it sits now, so this, the backfill of those revenues that we don't have to make sure that the parks are maintained and thus in attraction. And then you add that into that mix. We're still working with Greenway Foundation for the River Water. You know, those funds would come in very handy for that project specifically.
Well, as we develop the city as a destination, we're going to need additional revenue to support these additional amenities that we have.
And maintain what we have. So for example, there were multiple comments about beautifying the wormhole and the pavilion when you, when you go there, that would be a great use of this money, because ideally, people would come into our community and have that as amenity when they're visiting. And we wanted to, and be very nice for them.
Yeah. You want to keep it a destination point for Trinidad, you need to keep a portion of that money for marketing and advertising.
Oh, great, we're absolutely there.
So I guess the big question now goes back to Audrey. She's waiting for an answer from CML, whether we're not able to take this to a road with the people or not. How often did you talk to them?
I never, I emailed, and I haven't heard back at all, so I'll send an email to her.
Who did you have to send an email to?
I sent a general email, and maybe what I'll do is that's plus the contact with legal counsel, it might be a more effective approach.
I'm gonna do that. And just to say a little bit about this, like, my, I mean, the whole kind of category would be, you know, for a portion of the CC, portions only for advertising and marketing, I think for tourism for the city of Trinidad. And the rest of it would be for maintaining those assets or those amenities that are already tourist-related in the city of Trinidad. And that's kind of the, not real concise, but kind of an overall general topic for this. And I would like, and I think it would be maybe helpful to us, if, you know, staff kind of thinks about this more and kind of comes up with a more specific recommendation for council.
I'm kind of just agreeing, yeah, we do, like, to kind of get your thoughts from in there.
That's why I was, why I wanted to put it on today's agenda, so that we can kind of run around with signs, like, as well as council, where all the kinds of innocent as to how we would like to see it. Kind of, you're on the same, it just needs to be, you know, tarred down.
Yeah, but you're conceptually all in agreement, I think, with increasing the lodging tax and doing it, and I think we have heard everybody, but I mean, I'm not trying to limit the conversation.
You guys enough information?
That's exactly what we're looking for today.
The lodging tax also feeds back onto itself, right? So.
Right.
You take money, it goes back into the tourist part of Trinidad, and then it fills the seats again.
Right.
So it's a constant loop that's always feeding on itself, so.
And the other thing, too, is you're right, is that, you know, we can eventually create ourselves as that estimation point, as more people find out, more people come, so it won't continue to build any of those. Okay, let's move on to the next item on there. Question to remove the landfill as an enterprise.
So maybe this is something we previously had a conversation with city council on. So a few years ago, we made the landfill an enterprise fund with the hopes that it would generate enough money to sustain and support itself. As we mentioned, Cheryl couldn't be here today, but there, last we checked, four to $6 million in the red right now on their funds, because they're just, Bob can speak to it, too, we're just not maintaining the revenue. We did look into raising fees, which would have a minimal impact, but we raised our fees, I believe, in 2020, and we're not too far out of line for where we're at in the region. So even if we did a small increase to that, we would still be in the same boat, where the landfill is just not generating revenue to sustain itself. And part of the reason is just because of the equipment that's needed out there. We had recently you approved buying a used $150,000 truck, which we were very fortunate enough to find, and we were robbing Peter to pay Paul and scrimping the bottom of the barrel to find money even to buy that. So the landfill just doesn't have any reserves, and that's quite the opposite. So if there's a major piece of equipment that we need to replace, we don't really have any, any way to buy that out of that fund. So if we took it out of the enterprise fund, which would have to be approved by the voters, and put it back as just a general fund, departmental level, then it has the full backing of our reserves in the general fund, and it gets funded operationally like all of our other city departments. And I know, trust me, I get the frustration on this. This is something that we asked the voters for very recently. Unfortunately, it's just not proving to work out the way I think that we had intended. Certainly interested in any other creative thoughts you all have, but what I can guarantee you is that we're gonna be in a very tough position to maintain the landfill with the way it's structured right now.
You know, and being that we just recently approved it this way, it's been causing confusion in the minds of the voters.
It is.
That's a good idea.
It is.
And is that solving any problems by using it? Because then we still have to find a way to fund it through. So do we have funds available to handle that with the way our budget's set? Have we looked into that? How are we gonna, how are we gonna continue to operate that?
So if there's a major piece of equipment that needed to be replaced in the landfill, we would now be asking the council to commit that from marijuana funding or other capital requests, just as you do with anything else that would happen for maybe Bob's department otherwise. So it would just, it would just be all part of the general fund. But the $6 million that are in the red, that would go away because of our substantial reserves that we have in the general fund, so that offsets that from an audit perspective.
Explain, explain as to the $6 million that were in the red.
Yeah.
What is that then? Is it the equipment portion of it, or?
It's just the general cost to operate the landfill.
Closing costs?
And maybe Cheryl would know better than I do, but the way it runs is.
All give up.
Operating in a deficit. We're spending more than we're taking in, I'm about.
That's pretty concrete up there. I remember when the prior administration suggested this change to a unified fund for the landfill, and I remember distinctly that the rest of staff was adamantly opposed to it. And so we should have thought, and listened to staff, that your wrongs don't mean the right, so that's right and wrong. I mean, that doesn't make any sense, because now, I mean, you're saying we have to come out from marijuana money to support the landfill. And now we're at the point where every department head that submits a request for funds, the funds are on tariff, so that's an additional burden to the whole operation of the city. So I, I'm really in favor of going back. And, you know, I hate to say it, but I don't think people pay that much attention to be truthful with you.
If you asked them who went for president two years ago, that probably would have been from different people.
One of the other things I wanted to mention, because of the deficit we have right now in that fund, we can't issue debt for anything. So if it comes back in the general fund, we have the opportunity now to finance a piece of equipment and pay for it over time, which we can't do. No lender in their right mind would approve any kind of a loan for us out of that fund that's structured now.
Is it possible for us, I mean, this may not even be possible at all, but is it possible for us to sell the use of the land to other municipalities that need a place to dump? Do we have any capacity to do that?
Do you have any thoughts on that, Bob?
I don't, hey, I mean, it's obviously an option. I didn't really get to go in depth about the landfill on the request end of it or goals for 23, but the compactor has 15, the hour meter broke at 13,000. We're estimating it's got 15,000, 18,000 hours, so it's not gonna be long before we gotta think about replacing that compactor. That's one of the main pieces of equipment out there. So I, it just, unfortunately, it just keeps compounding upon itself, you know? I would, I hear what Steve is saying, I'd like to get this back on the, it's part of the capital, but I think we also need to really look at raising the dumping fees out there.
Did we just raise the fees?
Yeah, you know, everything's gone up. I hear, I hear what Steve's saying, that he raised it in 20, you know, we have to raise it again. It's just, it is what it is.
We were, they're still, they're lower than most. I had to dump three mattresses last week, and it would've cost $154 to do in Buffalo, and it cost me $25 to do it here.
Yeah, we were aware of them and some other ones around here, and they were comparable to ours. I believe, and Cheryl is not here, but I believe we collect about a half a million dollars in tipping fee revenue a year. So even if we doubled our fees, we're only talking about a million dollars a year. How much does a compactor cost?
It's gonna be 300, 350.
Just that alone, plus staff, which we have to maintain, so I can't, there's no way in the budget we can add more staff to the landfill at this point.
I think we're properly staffed now. We added an additional person last year, and that helped us a lot.
Well, that's.
So that was a big, we're able to keep the, we have to cover every night, you know?
I think, you know, after two years, we should be selling our landfill to other communities. Trying not to be a good idea, because depending on what stuff we get, trying not depending as to what, I mean, you mentioned that, it looked like we may be in that 40-year range of what Duffy's, what Duffy's going on right now.
For the life of the landfill?
Yeah. And what happens is that, something that Steve, anything that we do, it will be solid, or they can bring it in, it's gonna reduce our timeframe, and the closing at the back end is going to be shorter, and the cost is there that closes anyhow. So we gotta figure that it reduces it from, let's say, 30 years now, to let's say 20 years, we'll kind of try and make ourselves.
I just, I thought we could buy some additional land for uses.
We did. We'd been using that for cover, we'd go in there and do some covered dirt out of that area. Yeah, it's adjacent to it. That was, that was really smart, we purchased that a few years ago. It was good.
Does that open our closing thing?
It's not part of the original considered, it's not in the envelope where they're, no, it doesn't, but it does give us filter for cover every night.
And do the other council have any thoughts? You guys feel like you've gotta try to take it out of the enterprise run, try to move it toward a general.
I mean, yeah, because we're running thin, right? So anything happens, any major hiccup, that's game over, so we may need to move on, transfer it quickly, while things are going swell.
And I have talked to Cheryl about this, you know, she was one of the ones that was opposed to this from the beginning. She's, when she spoke to you all, I think we all heard her say, this is not working, and was being very, very cautious about continuing under this model. But, you know, we, we can get, we can get, we can get creative if we want to. We could look at maybe the city taking on trash hauling for our community, in which case, you know, it would be a municipal service, which apparently we had in the past, where our trucks would come for a fee, pick up trash from residents, that type of thing. Another option, some cities have what's called a franchise fee, so they put that on the trash haulers, who are private, for the wear and tear on the right of way. And there's a fee that's assessed to them, that they pass on to the customer that comes to the city as well. I would have to look more into that with Cheryl, to see if that's viable to solve our problems, but either way, I still think we're, we're in this position where we're just never gonna be able to make it work to generate the revenue that it's gonna cost to operate the landfill.
It sounded like maybe we moved, or put it in on the ballot, but I think we also need to have, if that does apply, then we need to have something available to us, which was the next step. Just like Eli was saying a minute ago, so many communities are having to move transfer stations. To transfers, and I think that anything that we do to shorten the life of our landfill out there, how do you know we're gonna probably put in the know that? Where would it be? That's the biggest problem.
That would be very expensive.
You'd have to align the transfer station.
With the cost of fuel. But you're right, I think, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of communities up north are doing that.
Retorn as a transfer station. I think the closest one here, I don't know if it's a, I think it's a, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, what is Wall Street doing? They have that right off the interstate there, they dump, and then they take that, trash goes somewhere, you can see where they dump, right there off the side of the interstate, close building.
Oh, Steve, that's, don't you ask them about the bus gap?
Yeah, we'll come back with it, but thank you all for your input on that.
Okay, third item is 2023 charter amendments, and coming up on a new, I don't know, you ever, the valid questions, and talked to Steve about this a while back, and had this conversation, and CML, and other municipalities, how often that they actually, we do have a review of their charter, because if you have a charter. Because if you have a charter, a lot of them are like every 10 years, some every 10 years it just depends, but the average is around 35, 6 years. Now, is it wise for council to go back to the originals, or we would pick some community members to take a look at the charter to see if there's anything we showed in the current charter that has to be changed, any changes that we would like to see made? And both that, I think, I'm not sure what your guys' thoughts are, but there are some things I think in the charter that maybe can be changed. So anyway, let's get some big thoughts on that.
Give me a minute to digest that.
Okay. Right, getting on council before, do you think there's any things that may be a good idea to review?
There's probably a few good items, because it's time goes change, things change, and you know, the way city governments are run now, and the way things are going. And I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to at least really review it and kind of see what we may have to change, where we're having difficulties or, you know, infringe upon something. But I kind of think that it sure would hurt us to really kind of review what we're doing and go where I think last week probably available. Have you seen anything that really would stand out, or we might need something?
I would say
Especially legally?
No, there's nothing really that I think needs to be changed in the charter. I mean, you may all have things that you want to have changed, but there was nothing that I feel needs to be changed. There haven't been any, like, you know, language problems or anything like that. I really have no pressing need for charter charges. I really don't. I, you know, I'll support anything that you guys propose that is legally okay, but I don't think there's anything, really.
I would think it might be a good idea, we put it as a work session, and then we had some homework to review it carefully beforehand, and then bring it in. I'll talk to my head and then.
What about Audrey?
I'll talk to Audrey.
Audrey does have one, because I said Audrey would be the one that has.
I just have one change. Our ordinance, when it was originally, or charter, but it was originally drafted, had language that the city was required to publish ordinances in ten point type at the time. So along the way, the word "pika" was removed. And so I just, from last week, learned that our ordinances aren't being published in ten point, despite we sending over every ordinance, every single time that says, publish on Friday, whatever day it is, have to get to me, ten point type, for this complication. I was never aware that it wasn't being published as it was submitted. So they, the Chronicles changed their, how you submit the ordinances, and so I had to pose the question, how do I ensure it's in ten point? And so I think we just need to change that. It's, you can just say ten point is difficult. The papers have to make a bid, and I think if, I don't think the public is having a difficult time knowing what we're, what we're doing necessarily, especially since the meetings are recorded, and there's a lot of opportunity for the public to be able to make themselves aware of what's going on. So that would be one that I would think.
There have been, you know, I'm just looking at it now, it's pretty simple. I mean, you know, it's, the language is, is easy to understand. You know, but if staff doesn't have it, I don't see why.
Well, I think what I get is to review just.
I appreciate that.
Because I've been saying things for 20 years. Thank you.
Yeah, it's easy to, it's easy to, to report your points, and probably get to view it. Sort of kind of honor system thing at that point, but yeah.
Well, I can't agree with that, but I've seen some things in a couple of days, and I'm seeing how it's a good idea that we bring it to a work session by itself, to do that. And I'm working with you that we got Bob, you know, and when we come together as a group, we just bring any changes or ideas or examples. A couple of changes that you're talking about.
I think what we should do, there's 13 chapters. Every city council person gets two chapters. And
Book reporting, frank reporting. While I'm computing. Okay, that's, I think that's good. So that, what, two? Anything else on that charter things to want to discuss?
No, I think that's good.
Any other thoughts on any of those items at this point?
No, thank you all for your feedback.
I would, let's go on to code enforcement discussion, I know that's been a high contention.
Yeah.
Go on to that, some interior and have, you know, rest of thoughts that you have there.
Yeah, just wanted to preface a couple of things. So in January, we sent you last year's report of all the code enforcement action that had been taken. So I think it is demonstrative that a lot of code enforcement does happen in our community despite what people think. I also want to mention out that recently, we've had a problem with a shipping container, and there's other ones that have popped up. So we're working with our development services staff to send letters of nonperformance for those as well. So we're trying to attack those things as best we can. A lot of the code enforcement issues that we deal with are when they're reported to us. And if any resident or anybody reports a code enforcement concern to us, we will follow up on that. Unfortunately, and I want the chief to kind of speak, I don't think we have the resources to address every little issue that's going on. But the other thing that I also want the chief to speak to is process, because sometimes we'll notify a house about weeds, but it'll be a renter, and it takes us a while to get ahold of the owner, or they refuse to do something about it. And so, so there is, there's a timing to it that I think that, you know, the public doesn't always understand that it's not this report, that there's weeds in this property and the next day they're gone. I wish it happened that quickly. But I, chief, if you don't mind me putting on the spot and give some insight?
No, I mean, so it's like I spoke this morning, it's, it's one of the biggest complaints I get at the police department. I field calls all the time about, you know, whether we're not doing enough of it, or maybe I'm doing too much of it. It's just, it's one of those things that it's a hard situation. I will say, last year, after we saw some areas where we were deficient, I streamlined our SOPs on how we regulate it. I was fortunate to get two good hires that really did a good job for me last year. I don't know if you guys reviewed the calls for service, because we did have strong, we definitely increased what we were doing. The weeds with Audrey's help, and we were able to, those that were not compliant, we're taking it on ourselves, getting private contractors and things like that. So I think we've streamlined a lot of where we were not being really proficient in the past and made it better. So I think going forward, again, I'd like to see this in another, in another department where they're handling these kind of issues. But I think we've made tremendous strides specifically in this last year in enforcing code enforcement. The shipping containers, that's going to be a tough one. That's, that's going to be a hard one to develop, and that won't really fall on our feet, that's going to fall on our building codes. So, you know, I haven't spoke to the new code officer yet, I mean, building code officer yet, as far as whether he wants to be the, one that's actually issuing the citations, or if we're going to do that for him like we did the previous one. But I think the more we take away where it's the police department that's showing up at the, being, I think the better off we are.
I think that's not a bad idea to take away review as far as work for their fault.
Well, I, my, my code enforcement officers wear a couple of different hats. They're also community service officers, so I need to keep that aspect, but, so it's going to be more to the city as well to make that happen. But I don't know, unless there's some areas that you're getting complaints on, I know I get phone calls from a lot of citizens as well, people as part of what's going on, but we address it fairly quick. The animal shelter is kind of, it's tough right now because there's just no room. I know we're going to try to address that going forward, but my animal control puts up an apple now, we got, it's hard to get it in there. I mean, there's just no room anymore. So I don't know what we're going to do going forward with that, but that's, that's going to be a huge issue coming forward.
You know, one thing that, and I've talked about this before, and I've, I've talked to a couple of other communities upstate, like the calls for service, and you guys are having to answer some of the most ridiculous things sometimes. And I questioned that upstate with a couple of other communities, and some of them, I guess, don't, where they're real frivolous, they don't answer calls. And I'm not sure what's your thought, because then it would allow any of your officers to handle the real important ones that are coming.
Well, I hope we never get to where we're not answering calls. I mean, so far, we were able to have our most calls rather quickly, and my code enforcement guys, like I said, I hired two good ones. I got lucky this last time, and the hires that I found, and they're very proactive. We set up the city in grids, and specifically with the weeds, and we address it in grids. I got Sergeant Hallow, who'll be leaving me in April, so we're going to put that responsibility onto our department as well for what he does with the batted vehicles. I will say, I did streamline that as well going forward. So I think we're okay as far as what I have for SOPs and, and the direction of enforcement that we're doing, unless there's something that you want me to look at specifically, I think we're okay.
One thing that I think is really important is that every department needs to be working together for code enforcement. You know, they see potholes, or say, see a new container, or whatever. It would be nice if all of the departments would work together and say, go to the code enforcement department and say, this is what I see, be anybody from the electrical department. If they notice something, they let you know.
Right. And they do, they do.
They do.
We work together. You know, one of the things, I guess, while we're, while we're talking about it, and I don't like doing this because I haven't had a chance to talk to Steve about it yet, is Dana Crawford approached Mike and I a couple of years back with a solution for the downtown parking. And I think we need to revisit that, and I don't know if I even told you about it, Steve, but I apologize that I haven't. But it was a pretty good solution. It was, they took over the downtown parking. Either that, or we look at meters, because downtown parking is a huge store in Northside as far as the business owners, the customers trying to use it. I'm going to be in violation here in a little bit because I parked two hours ago. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's, it's a lot in itself. So the solution she had, and I can't remember the name of it, do you remember the name of it? But I will find it because I have the paperwork. That's something I think we need to look at, because they actually were stewards for the downtown, so they were actually downtown, they were helping direct the tourists. So it was, they were serving the function as for the parking, but they were also down there as an instrument to, you know, show off our city, you know, answer those questions that maybe residents will have. And I think it was a pretty good spin, and it was actually Dana's idea, and it seemed, it seemed like it might be something we should take another look at.
I know that we had that discussion just the other day in a work session on parking, and we'll continue that discussion. Council, what do you think?
As far as parking, you asked. By age, it's hard to keep a thought for anything more than that. You know, really, as silly as it is, most of the calls that I get are code enforcement. And in the grand scheme of things, that's, it's not the most important. But looking at our processes, especially when it involves council, if somebody calls me, the system to get it to the right person is so cumbersome. You know, I just, I won't call chief. I have to call Steve, and he don't know how hard. I feel bad even trying to talk to him about it, because there's so many more important things for him to handle. So I'm wondering, first thing that I'd like to think about is, I think, Steve, we talked about having some kind of a software system, or an automated system where if we advertise a number where citizens can report directly, and kind of not involve so many of us in the complete compartment, that might be, department, I'm sorry, complete department might be good. And then the second thing I'm wondering is, if you all have any thoughts about taking code enforcement away from the PP and in totality, bringing it back to the building inspection department? Because really, you know, like Chief said this morning, he's just barely, he's now barely a post staff. And it grieves me that we have to use that human resource for something small like code enforcement when there's a prime meeting committee.
So just to be the devil's advocate here, while Charlie, I know, wants to move it away from the police department, where are we going to play it? We have no office.
Yeah, research sounds good.
We have no room in City Hall. We just remodeled and got rid of the conference room to make it office.
So I'm not really talking about, said a little space about it. I'm just talking about if all of them are a different envelop.
Right.
It could actually work out of my department, because like I said, my community service officers are still going to be part of my department. So it's not like I need a physically hoop bias out of my department. I just need to move the responsibility, I guess, away from us, to where it's not a tritaphy police department officer, but a civilian code enforcement. And they are civilians that are doing it now, just to be clear.
Right.
But just where it's not tritaphy police department, it's city tritaphy code enforcement.
Okay, that wasn't what was explained to me by someone else.
Yeah, no, that's all I wanted to do.
Okay, because that's what I'm a little freaked out about is, we don't have any room, you know, we are totally maxed out.
Are you going to still have three code enforcement officers?
So right now I have four, with Hallow leaving. I don't plan on replacing him, I'm going to absorb his responsibilities into one of the community service officers. That, because he deals a lot with the towed vehicles and inspections and such, which should still be at the police department. I don't want to put that completely away from us, because, first of all, those are state forms, and there's state things that need to be done, and it needs to be followed around. So I will not plan on filling his position once he retires, but I will absorb that into where I am now. One of my community service officers also serves as the officer, the individual that has to give the information to the district attorney's office in a timely matter, so she uploads our parts, she uploads our videos, she's doing that. So I've kind of restructured my department, because I used to fall underneath the evidence wall, so I had to pull that away because it was too much. So I've just kind of streamlined what, what people are doing. And I don't plan on replacing Hallow at this point, unless down the road it seems like I need to.
Okay, so let's take someone calling to report, or something that happens, or the south side of town. Does, do we either want anybody from the code enforcement responding, or do you, does someone in code enforcement responsible for this area, and someone else responsible for this area?
Okay, so if they're responding, the complaint is code enforcement? My code enforcement officer goes. Unless they're not on, because they're, they're not a 24-hour thing. If it's after-hours or a time where they're not working, then my officer goes, and we generate something in CAD to, so that they can pick it up when they're back. If it's an hour line or something, we'll go and take the mission complaint and give it back.
So let's ask you a question, Charlie. What would you say would separate your code enforcement guys with a regular code enforcement guy? In other words, if we specifically hired a guy, what would he do that your code officers would do? In other words, how would it stay? In other words, would you have one guy just doing weed control?
So
What, I mean, that's what I don't understand.
So the separation I had before was, how do we do all the junked vehicles? And we've made tremendous stride on the batted vehicles, junked vehicles, towed vehicles.
Right.
Now, I'm going to take those responsibilities that he has, and I'm going to give them back to just one of, one of my community service officers. As far as As far as who responds to what call, the way I have a structure right now is I've got two people that respond on who's available. It's not really divided into the cities, like sectors, like probably you're talking when you were a police officer. It's not divided that way, it's the entire city.
So what I'm saying is, if we hired a code, if we hired a guy to do code, what would he specifically, what would you specifically let him do? I mean, would do, and in other words, what I'm saying, your two officers are code officers, right? So they would handle just vehicles, dog calls? Well, in other words, the separation, if we had to want to take code calls, if somebody called in for a violation for weeds or something, he would do that, right?
So the only thing that's gonna fall, that what I've envisioned falling completely under the department scale is those towed vehicles and the vehicle portion of it. The rest of the code would fall under the other two officers that then were doing it. So the weeds, the dogs, the.
So you, oh, so that means the guy would do the dogs too?
Yes, we would have an animal control officer still that would fall under code.
So I'm thinking maybe just look at all of the areas of code enforcement that typically are done, and then look at some that would be logical to put in the hands of someone who's always a police officer, like weeds, or junk accumulation, or just things that are more about land use, I think.
That's where it falls, since some cities are putting their land use code enforcement under their development services.
And then animal situations or junk vehicles where someone's gonna lose something property, that seems appropriate to me.
Right, exactly, that's kind of what I envisioned happening.
Chief, you were saying that these containers will become a real big nuisance around town? You're saying that that, as you said, that's gonna be the big problem, man?
Well, I don't know how we, and maybe this is a conversation that needs to get evoked. So what do we do when we go through our process as far, and we've served all our notices, and they're still not complying? So basically, what you've got there is, and they're used for multiple things, I don't know if you've jumped around, there's a ton of them. There's a ton of them in the city that they have stuck in. So what do we do, what do we do to the point where we've exhausted the process, and they're still not complying? And yet that container's still sitting?
That comes with fines, right?
Well, fines, you know, are you eventually locking someone up? Or are we eventually getting something to physically haul that away if the contents inside? I mean, it's, it's got a lot of technicals on there as far as when we're done with it.
I think we need to look at all of it, but I think we need to look at every avenue.
Did the code, does the code not, I'm sorry.
I thought we asked the code.
Does it not say that the figure to dress up and slip away?
Two, that they would be compliant where it doesn't look like it?
Yeah, they could probably to match buildings with a fine.
They're supposed to make it look like, whether it's a small building, or whether it's a side, or something, they're supposed to be already doing that. And why, you know, we're not getting them to do that? What was the, what teeth do we have to fix that?
So if they get permission in advance, and they comply with requirements, and they do that, then that's okay. But I think the great problem is when they just get a container and dump it there. You don't put it on the property. And we don't have a way, you know, multiple, if we do all the notices and we do citations, we don't have a way to remove a cargo container. We just don't, right? Yeah, there's no, we don't have any way of doing that, and I.
Are you talking we can do it, or we don't have it?
We don't have a way.
That's what I, we could, yeah, sure, by choice.
And we don't have a way to do it. But I'm, you know, I'm happy to prosecute anything that comes into municipal court. And I, I don't think as a matter of policy, we've really been citing on that. I think we need to try to find other solutions, and let's try to, you know, pass the law.
The thing that I've been thinking about from the beginning is that if all of a sudden, you know, there is a container that shows up, whether it's code enforcement or whoever goes up and says, okay, where did you receive this? And said, well, where did you receive it, you know, two years ago? Show me your documentation when you purchased that. More than, and more likely, it's fairly new, but they didn't get, go down to get it because it's got, it's bigger, the containers are bigger than that 110 square feet that's allowed. So then what we do is, I think, we give them a citation of some sort to take care of it, and maybe give them a couple of opportunities. And the third time is because we don't have the way to review. But there's other people in town that can remove it, that's what I'm saying. So what I was thinking, if we hire somebody, if that's a good idea, and you have to remove it, then they do it. And then the cost goes back to them, you know, and how that cost comes back to us for the removal will be whether it's through a lien, or a tax, or something like that.
But part of the problem is, what do we do with it if we move it?
Right, like where?
What you do is you mark it to people that are selling them elsewhere. I'm just saying something, you mark it to the people that are selling them elsewhere. There's a place in the bubble that are turning them into houses.
Like, we, just as an example, and I'm not sure this is really on point. We had a guy living in a camper for a long time, a property that was not his. We eventually took the camper, put it in the landfill, and he wound up living in the landfill. Now, I'm not saying that people are gonna, you know, live their cargo containers. There are always problems, and if we start to enforce this here formally, let's say we have, you know, a dozen cargo containers. We notice, we cite, we find, we do all that, and then we start moving the cargo containers. A dozen cargo containers in the landfill are gonna be really weird. It's gonna be, I mean, what are they up here?
They could rent storage units.
Kind of type of.
We ended up ending that, that unit that that guy was living in, now we had the title on that.
But he drove it out of there.
He drove it out of there, but we had the title on it, so I don't know what the ownership is on these containers. But you're right, Eric, we could, with our auction process, these things would go like buckings, if we have the ownership of them.
The other thing too, that we can.
Safe housing in the area.
You know, the simplest answer to this is, go back to what our ordinance says, is that they need to make that container look similar like a nice, decent shed or something. That is the simplest answer, so I think we need to make them to live up to that. Then we go to the next one.
Right, and the other reason why it's a problem is because they're sitting there going to you and then they do it. And I'm sure that, like, our, you know, prior, your building inspector was probably making all kinds of promises about what people were going to do. You know, right, and they're just assuming what it's like for him in the field, and they wouldn't do it, but he didn't want to cite because they'd be like, well, we're not gonna do that. Anyway, so we can do that. I do want to say, I don't think we wind up taking ownership in cargo containers. We find, and if the fines aren't paid, then we can lien, but we don't, we don't have ownership. So I don't think we can sell that. Yeah, I don't know how we got title of that. I don't doubt it.
Because we have to stay on.
Okay, good.
And he didn't really have title to it himself.
Oh, that helps, yeah, yeah.
I can hear what you said.
So he didn't have title to it himself, so. So we do have a municipal voter vote, if anyone's part of it.
So we should bring it out.
It is occupied. Well, we need to get something done with these containers, because every time you turn around, there's a human popping up somewhere. You know, and if, you know, if someone put one in next to my property, you know, and this is right out in the open, I'm gonna race and heckle them.
Yes, you are.
I would like that.
But we don't, that's counted.
And if they don't.
Yeah.
And if they don't make it up to standard, you know, then that's where the fines go into place, or removal goes into place.
No, you're right.
So if I can add back to Adam's staff, we have Adam Keely to basically that planning department. So perhaps once she gets, like you said, in that department, they can have more focus on things like that.
Do we have a code that states that you have to ask for permission even to bring a shipping container into the community like that?
Anytime that they build something over a square footage, what is it, stand by a hundred, square, 120 square feet?
That's a tour.
120 square feet, they can prove it.
Okay, so that needs to be the, they need to have that off the top, like you can't just bring a shipping container into.
They can decide immediately if they don't meet that criteria.
You know, I understand where we have to come on the front, because the reality is, what we ask them to do is not really answer to a team sometimes. But you kind of look at things in our position too, because we pass laws on the containers. I had a guy that still today calls me, that container's still, that container's still. So it becomes not only a credibility issue, council comes credibility, it becomes a credibility issue for all of us in the city, you know?
Old city.
You know? I guess the other thing is, if council wants to be very, take this very seriously, and look at that in particular, because, you know, social, just our limited storage containers in low density residential areas without a building permit, they can stay there for six months with a building permit, and then basically they have to go away, or what happened. So our new building inspector definitely has a background in code enforcement. If that's council's direction, and Steve's on board with that approach, you could direct Steve to have code enforcement specifically go out and find out those containers and at the very least, see if they're being setbacks, or what happened, because, and see if we have permits in place. I'm certain we have zero permits in place. And of course, structures, even before your ordinance was in place, that you couldn't have storage containers in low density residential, they should have had building permits in place. And so when they don't, it's a code enforcement issue, but I think you just need to give Steve that direction if that's what you want to do.
I'm really.
He would do that.
I'm really, really proud of myself for this. I was just telling Karen that I think I'm gonna get involved.
You do ask you, I don't get to argue.
I really believe that that's why the best.
That was, that was a cop.
What is God's? Do you guys think that was the best Adam?
Yes.
Absolutely.
That's what we'll do. And then, certainly back real quick on the original item we were talking about in terms of where our code enforcement resources are dedicated. Like I said, we'll be bringing some change in our organizational structure forward. And I think, as Audrey mentioned, we'll take the opportunity to talk with Keely and John, our new development services folks, and see about land use and force enforcement, some of it following up to their shops to give Chiefs some relief. And that's, and look at how we can structure that a little bit differently.
Okay, let's move on to the board and commission consolidation. And this is something that to have some kind of discussion on, because we have several boards and commissions on there, but we also have a lot of trouble sometimes going in some of these seats, image boards and commissions. And we have a little discussion on that today. Tom, what are your thoughts, Steve?
Well, there's a couple of low-hanging roots that I think we can talk about right away. Margie's here too, she has some thoughts on a couple of our boards, so I want to get her input. But the first one would be the space to create an oversight board, and a question of whether we feel like that's even necessary.
I thought it was discredited already.
Yeah, it's still in the books as an acknowledged board, but we would have to remove that by ordinance, which I think staff is recommending at this time. We don't feel like it serves as much of a purpose, so that gets rid of one board right there. And then we have.
Same question, if that happens, who would be responsible for overseeing the use of the space?
That would be staff. So we would, we would be figuring that out. Right now, it falls under our economic development leg. And so as we go through that restructure, we would incorporate that into that process and figure out how to best define that. But it would be, it'd just be like any other city building, be like the library where we have Jess operating that building. Staff would be in charge of the space.
The only concern I have, because I was one of the people who proposed this, I was on the, I was liaison to this board, and we were just kind of going nowhere, and there wasn't anything for us to do anymore. But there should be something in place that keeps the usage of this facility dedicated to what it was intended to do. So if someone on city staff could come and say, hey, we need office space, that looks good.
Right.
You know, so.
I thought it was huge. I, you know, I really find that that's a really valid point, because in my position, I'm really confused on what is commons and what's barrage, and how does it overlap? And right now, it's overlapping, and things are stunted, but people are asking, hey, can I have a dance over here? Can I put a dance in it over here? And right now, I'm telling people, no, because we don't, that's economic development, and this is true to the district. So the confusion lies within myself, but I don't have a explanation to the community. And there's a lot of tension, because they think, well, you have all that space, so I can't use it. And so, you know, when you're trying to balance arts and culture, creative district, CI, and what it was originally meant for, and economic development, there's a bit of a struggle there. So getting some clarity on exactly what the goal is for that portion of this building would make a huge difference in my life.
And maintaining whatever tie we have with art space, because it's not very common, because it's not very common to maybe at this point. So that's why I'm concerned about really just banning that, at least for something in place that keeps it from becoming just another use of the building.
Also, could the boards do that?
Well, and certainly, you know, council, we would want your input too, with any major changes to how we would operate this building. And we definitely got funding based on a specific, well, specific uses for how we said we were gonna use it. And I think we want to hold true to that as best as we can. To make sure, if you wanted one of our boards and commissions to have input into its use, it would fall under arts and culture, which is a board we already have. So they could, they could definitely taste, you know, some of the creative side of things too.
Well, then how does that, that creative district, and the creative district board, and our creative district designation, how would that like shuffle together and work together? Because I know that creative district doesn't want to lose sight of their, they don't want to lose sight of what this building should be and how it could be used based on what they thought it was meant to be. So if arts and culture is gonna be the oversight board, would they be overseeing what creative district plans are and goals are for this?
Arts and culture is just an advisory board, so they wouldn't be an oversight board. They would just be advising these folks on things that they see. And that's just one exception.
Right, I mean, that's what, I'm just really curious, because I have a lot of people asking questions, and I'm like, I need to know. I need to know what's going on. So there's a lot of over.
There is a lot.
Well, because creating, because, because of that.
Let me give you an overview of all of the boards that just showed them down here. For everybody that have former city, we have arts and cultures board, we have parks and, now we have the outdoor. Nine is only which, that's kind of used to be under there. Garden board, we have tourist board, the vehicles, the fields, we have Forest Street, it's sort of a reservation. Main Street spaces create creative district. Those are all the various boards that we have. And that's what we were talking about, is is there a way that we can consolidate some of these into two to one? Like you were talking about, creative district and main street should be combined. That was something that's talked about only about 10 or 12 years ago. I think that would be.
So some of the questions, and I know that if that's where it's headed, I know that Dola has a facilitator that could help kind of massage some of the questions that would come up. But some of the questions that came up already was, Main Street's a city board, creative district's a 501(c)(3). So how would that affect grants and funding? Also, if it was combined and the budgets are what they are, would the money be combined, or do we lose a portion of that? And once the boards are combined, how many people are still allowed on that board? Then how do we differentiate arts and culture, what creative district is mostly about versus where the more. Then how do we differentiate arts and culture, what creative district is mostly about versus where it's more and revitalizing downtown? So how do we keep both interests aligned and meet everyone's needs?
Here's, here's the thought. You know, you have main street, which is led by Trina, correct?
Both, creative district and.
And let's say we combine that with a space to create commons. Then we take the creative district and put it in arts and culture. So who would take it?
They're different. But what space to create? I, I'm not sure what they, what their mission or their, is. Is it just upstairs?
No, 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 no. It's, yeah. We're talking about the space.
This space.
Okay, the oversight board. I think it, really the only overlapping that I'm seeing has to be with arts and culture, creative district. The other one seemed fine. I don't think there's anything in there. Maybe if there's a new outdoor recreation board that's code and that. We have some overlap parts, but the rest I don't think.
Well, maybe, I mean. It's just. Or it has a creative name. Ridgeway has a creative name. When they've combined their creative district and main street, maybe they didn't have any other options like we have. We have all these other options where, you know, those people here still have a mission. So I just know that the sooner we can narrow it down and focus and get our line straight, the better off it is. The reputation of this space.
Here's a couple of these boards that it seems like we really can't be active as much as we think they can. And one of them is the ready group of appeals. It's there for a purpose, but how often do we have an appeal on our ready group?
Not often, but I think we need to.
Yeah. Can that be combined with something else?
Well, that suits us in a group of say.
We also have urban forestry. That's another one that seems to be able to just kind of dictate, you know, we have a hard time getting people to participate in urban forestry.
We actually have a strong board now though. So we had a little wall in it and now we have some incredibly talented and motivated individuals with a lot of great backgrounds. So I don't want to see that.
Now, the only other one that I think, Steve, you and I talked about is if you're going to be parks and recreations and the outdoor come together possibly.
That makes sense.
These those two.
Yep.
Would, would a travel, with the travel and tourism, be a part of those two boards?
Yeah, like we talked about earlier, the tourism board is, is set by, by statute under that ordinance. So we really can't make any changes to consolidate them really.
Here's one of the biggest problems that I, I know I see this in tourism is the timeframe, the time that they meet. They meet at nine o'clock every, twice a month. The problem that I see is, you know, anytime that I have been to a meeting, we start off with five people there, by the time the meeting's done with, there's only down to three or maybe two. That's a problem. And I think a lot of it has to do with maybe the meeting times that these, when they meet. So I think they need to come up with better ideas to when they can be there because when you walk out of a meeting, it's not even half, that's already half done. And they have one foot in the door, one foot out of the door saying, I gotta leave, I gotta leave, I gotta leave. That's not good because they're not actually focused on what they're supposed to be doing. And I, and Marty, you see that in the.
I do. And it is a good, it is a good suggestion that you use a meeting.
I think that all the boards need to take a look at their time, their meeting times.
And that would be their purview, but it's a, it's a good suggestion that they have that conversation, especially as they bring in new board members.
If they're going to make decisions on behalf of, you know, everybody, they need to be focused.
And that being said, Mayor, I know this doesn't have anything to do with consolidation, but it would be my suggestion that the tourism board be rather an advisory board. I mean, there are volunteers from the community that have, have an interest in tourism and the community itself. But along the lines of being accountable to the city, I, I think it would be a good process if they were an advisory board and make recommendations to council rather than taking on those decisions on their own and handling that amount of money. Just a suggestion.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
How is that ordinance or?
Well, we probably have to look at, and I was thinking this earlier, maybe like repealing, you know, and re-adapting or something, the whole framework under which tourism and the lodging tax now exist. Right? And having, I'm sorry, Council, but having the lodging tax still earmarked in specific ways, but having the tourism board be, as Marty said, an advisory board only. And those funds have to be used for a certain purpose once they're, you know, is they're collected, but, but having them be an advisory board.
I think that the only board that actually has, operates with budget.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that they can spend freely as they decide. And I think it's a lot of money for, for any board to be handling with that accountability.
And it goes back also to what Council member, Uncle Tree said, council doesn't get a say in the message because they're doing that and, and it doesn't go to council too. So as an advisory board of wood, they can make these suggestions, but if council isn't fully on board with that, you just have to power to change that message.
And how can you spend money? It's been an ongoing issue and problem since I began. So I don't, I think it would solve a lot of problems.
Okay, so how would that work then? Let's say there's a budget for tourism of, let's say, $800,000 and then each month they've gotten, which is an advisory board. They're going to have to present their suggestions, how to spend that money, and it's got to come in from the council?
Well, I, I'd take it more, you know, in terms of the logistics of how we get there. Like in other words, we would have to have, you know, we have to have an increase. So a ballot initiative to ask for additional funding, right? If you're going to decide that you should all go to 5.2, 5%, what have you. And perhaps just a ballot initiative that talks about repealing the existing, you know, scheme under which tourism exists. So that the lodging tax does not go directly to a tourism board for this purpose, but rather it is earmarked to be spent in a certain way, which should be specifically decided out by council. Does that make sense?
And I think it goes back to the early discussion about what we're trying to find out from CML. If that's required to go to a vote or if that's something council can just amend and restructure.
I agree. The whole thing is, is like, let's say we go to, let's say we use current numbers. Say we got half a million dollars or whatever we have for tourism right now. And we use that as a, as a budget line item for the use of tourism in the community. But they, each time they meet and they want to go to the billboard, they want to buy signage, they want to advertise outside or whatever, then each, every other week, or they need it once a month, or they need to, if they have a work session, they have a regular. And if the most is laying out, that would have to come in front of the council for approval. Is that what you're saying?
I, I think so. And I think those are kind of like details that you could kind of flush out later, right? But in picture, and I do want to say that any revenue enhancement is a taper issue that has to be voted on by the people, right? So if you're going to have a ballot issue, let's say you go from three to 5.25, why not just have a whole thing reset into the voting stack, right? And come in, you know, whatever, and, and it would be kind of a lengthy ballot initiative, I suppose. But, you know, like I was talking about the, the title of the board that's, you know, earned with the ballot initiative before. And then it would be, you know, the lodging tax would be earmarked for the, for the marketing and advertising of tourism in the city of Trinidad and money spent to maintain the very, not the very, but the amenities that are being promoted therein. It's something to that effect. And have 3%, let's say, dedicated and earmarked for advertising and marketing for the city, for tourism. And then the rest for, for the things that we've talked about, taking care of the parks and all those kinds of things. And how did that be one big exciting ballot issue? And increasing this by 2.25 from three to 5.25 or 5.75 or whatever you decide. Does that make sense?
Well, it doesn't. I guess I wouldn't have to, Mayor, the details is a threat. The devil's in the details as to how all this stuff comes back to council. It's a decision in the timeframe that tourism has to make their recommendations to council because they may be up against a timeframe also of.
There are complication timeframes.
Right. There are some timeframes that they have to meet. So that's, that's the question, one of the things that I see.
But I want to get council that money and have them be an advisory board. You know what I mean?
Well, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out how, you know, the details, you know, just the details as to how all this is going to work. So that it doesn't. We don't really have a lot of time for that, I feel, that will benefit the community because it's got to go to their advisory board in a work session or whatever to, and then they're going to be okay in the regular meeting. Then it's got to come to us in probably a work session and then to, to a regular meeting. It could stretch it out a month or two. And that, those are the things that I'm actually worried about.
Sure. And if we repeal the whole thing and, and we say we're going to re-adapt it, I think you can have the function of the tourism board be however you want it to be. We don't have to, you know, use the existing model to kind of do, you know, whatever. You can have it be however you want it to go and, and do, you know, some kind of, I mean, different, you know, instructions to the tourism board, obviously, on how they're going to recommend to council, how it's going to be done. But, but the whole thing would be repealed. So the council would be the decision maker. Money specifically in parts. I know it's starting to repeat myself, I'm sorry.
I, I do see this as that there's a lot of people on the tourism board that they really do reach out and do a lot of, a lot of labor. You know, and the, the restructure they've got to be correct, from what I'm hearing.
Okay.
So some cities, what they'll do is they'll, they'll take.
They'll have to, I mean.
So some cities use staff for that. So for example, some cities will take their lodging tax and create maybe like a convention and visitor's bureau and fund that. And then it's staff's job to implement the policy decisions made off the recommendation of the tourism board and set by council. That we want to have a marketing campaign this year to do this. And we would budget accordingly ahead of time. So you would know if this is going to be a budget line items, this is what we're going to do this year.
And I wouldn't expect council to approve every
Right.
magazine that they've decided that they're going to advertise in. So that would be, you know, they would say, you would give them a little, a line item with an expenditure in it that they could reach, that they could use for publications or for billboards or, you know, as it's, as it's aligned right now in the budget. And, and it wouldn't have to be the council approving every Colorado Life magazine and, and how it looked. It, it would be, you know, advising that this is the amount that they, they would have to do for publications.
I'm sorry to kill this horse, dead horse, but it could have come.
Yeah.
But what would you say, just if we, if we had this strategic plan?
Yes.
And we have the specific goal of what our advertising is to accomplish.
Yes.
That advertising would be spent inside those parameters on a predetermined schedule and would necessarily be our express approval.
On every item, yes.
Okay, anything else on, on this, this item? I think we either go ahead and take a break now or take.
I'm just like, with the, I'm representing the main street board, so that's why I'm here. So I'm just curious about how we're talking about combining and what that looks like. Will we have an decision on that today or is that just to discuss? I, I don't know the protocols, so I want to make sure I'm starting in the right place.
No, no, no. I wanted to circle back to why, you know, these two ladies are here.
Again, that's understood.
So I think we, we specifically wanted to vet out combining main street with, with, sorry, what was it?
Creative district.
Creative district. And so one of them is non, well, they're both nonprofits.
No, main street's a city board.
Main street's a city board, so yeah.
And creative district's a nonprofit.
Exactly. So what are your thoughts on that? Just do we get that fleshed out a little bit?
We have the support of DOLA when it comes to the parameters, how this is going to work. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, basically. We have some, some examples before us. We have people that are willing to come down from Department of Labor Affairs and talk us through those things. So really we're looking, I think our goal, our end result should be the most effective group of people that we can put together. If that's in two boards, fine, but it doesn't feel like we're the most effective we can be in those two different avenues. So putting it together, there's going to be mess, there's going to be overlap, there's going to be questions, there's going to be some things we have to learn. And I think that's just the nature of this. But I do think a strong board with a very clear goal, very clear missions, all the, standing behind the ideas of what a main street board is, what a creative main street board looks like, I think those things are easily accomplished with this discussion, but also really valid when we're talking about the movement and the change and the rebranding of our main street board.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Hi, I'm with the main street board as well as a business owner on main street, so kind of this conversation.
Okay.
So sorry, I shouldn't introduce myself first.
And that would be one of the other hurdles that we have is that there's not one existing member on creative district that was here prior who helped facilitate this mission. And it's been handled over with, with not one strong person on board. Lack of a better way to explain it. So the hurdles that I'm coming across is the, you know, just like meeting board, there's a lot of people that have their own agendas, but I can't make them understand what the vision is for creative district versus means. Main street seems to have a really good vision, but creative district, I mean, it's kind of willy nilly and every single person is brand new under two months. And to build a strong board with them, it might be the perfect time to combine because it's brand new. I mean, people coming on and I can see that as a really big positive. The concern I have is how do you combine? Because they really are two different, there are some perhaps, but really they are kind of separate. I, I think it could work. It hasn't, I'm sorry. It has worked, Erin, and it has worked in Ridgeway and La Pancha and other places where they have come on. And in that case, they have OEDIT and DOLA working together to support one board.
Yeah. So I was just going to point out that the creative district is overseen by our creative industries, which is part of OEDIT.
Right.
So it has roles it has to play and it really allows it to lose its certification.
Which will be getting recertified this June if, so I don't know if that comes into play with combining the boards or if you lose that.
It's something that should be in conversation.
Yeah. And I'm absolutely willing, as a representative of the main street board, to go to the town where it has worked and ask questions and be available for learning and say, I'm curious, obviously this is something new and we want to do it the most efficient way possible. I'm willing to take that trip, introduce myself and lay the questions out very clearly.
Me too. And also speaking to Gail and Larry from DOLA and Christie from OEDIT. I mean, they have offered up a number of times that this is really where it's heading, to send down a facilitator to kind of bridge the gap and answer both sides' questions and see how they can. I'm not opposed to combining them. I'm not. I think it would be a good idea. But I don't want to lose the value and the vision of creative industries or main street.
Margaret, by the way, real quick, so, I mean, one of them is an advisory board in the city council, one of them's a full nonprofit. So what I'd like you all to do maybe is look at some models, like you're saying, and see how other communities are doing that. And then get that feedback back to me and we can work with council on what that would look like.
By when?
As soon as you want to.
Let's get to two weeks. Let's have a decision so we can move on.
I'm, I'm sure Les' head is spinning too, because combining a nonprofit with the city advisory board under our ordinance, it, it may just be more of a model where they meet at the same time and have joint meetings and work together. So I'm curious what you find out in other communities so we can bring the council back something concrete that you think will work. Does that work?
It's a great start.
Okay. Yeah. I don't think there's any opposition to, to them working together and figuring out how you can make the strongest board as possible and combine those resources.
I would just point out briefly, I know we need to move on. Arts and culture, that advisory council has a very limited focus in terms of promoting public art and appreciation of public art in the community. So I, I don't think combining them with this is a good idea. I think they can stay, but their narrow focus on that can be, help to lead them well.
Okay.
Okay, we can take a break. We can go on down to dining and finish up. Keep your thoughts.
That sounds like a man.
Good. There's one more. We'll take a break. Okay, there's one more, we'll take a five minute break. Just like five minutes, that's it.